Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
First off, I would like to see approval of the open board from April 17th, with the 2000. Could I get a motion, please?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Before we get into the meeting, I'd like to talk a little bit about, on May 9th, we had our graduation from the academy where we had 26 new officers accept their oath, and we're excited about having that. Also, starting the second week of June, we'll be having another class of about 30 candidates that will start their training for becoming a St. Louis police officer. Our goal will be to have an average of about two classes a year, and this will be our first one, or second one, starting this year here. So, just wanted to let everyone know about that. Also, we have a ratification for the U.S. Marshal Service for Overtime Compensation Fund, and that ratification would be for $27,256.66. Can I have a motion before that moves?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. With that, we move to our purchasing.
Thank you, Colonel. The following items are presented in the packet that you have received, and copies of these packets are available for public review on the table in the front of the room. Included are any disclaimers regarding board members' business or family relations. The first item in your packet are bid items, and there are six items listed. I move approval for these six items regarding truck equipment, various safety products, ammunition, chemical munitions, pepper spray, and shotgun rifle slings.
I'm second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The next item are sole source requests. There are two sole source requests, one for information services for use of a software license in the amount of $12,000, and another for electrical repairs in the amount of $4,000. And I move approval of these two items.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, I move approval for six increases to open purchase orders. This is for elevators, for increasing $5,000 for elevators, $5,000 to RJP Electric, $10,000 to Cool Air, and $10,000 to Roar, and $3,000 to Z Specialty, and $3,000 to NAPA. I move approval of these six increases to open purchase orders.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I move for correction to the vendor name for the sale of brass surplus property for brass casings to Gateway Bullets, from Gateway Bullets.
I'm second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Colonel, good morning. As we always do, we'll start with our current presentation for the department through the month of April. The first slide that we look at shows the overall crime for the city year-to-date. If you will notice, we'll start at the red this year, or the red this month. Overall crime in the city of St. Louis is down 7.7 percent during the first four months of the year. These are crimes that are coded through April. The gold category, property crime, we've seen a decrease of 2.7 percent, or 172 incidents through the first four months. And significant decreases in the person crime area. There are 463 fewer person crimes for the first four months of this year compared to last year, or a 24 percent decrease. So, it appears that our strategies are working. It appears that we have caught a stride in some of the areas that we're focusing in with our hotspot policing and our additional efforts. This slide shows in comparison going back to 2006, all of the crime categories to show continual downward trend. Again, the colors coordinate. The red are total crimes that have occurred through April compared this year, back through 2006. As you can see, this is the, for the first four months of this year, the fewest crimes have been reported compared to any of the months listed in the slide. Same is true for person crime and property crime. So, again, we continue on a long-term decrease and decline into the crime categories. I always like to look at it and to centralize, so again, we focus on hotspots, and just at this level, to look at how crimes are separated throughout portions of the city. As you know, the city is divided into three patrol divisions, and starting with the South Patrol Division, we see decreases in all of the crime categories of between 4 and 5 percent. So, again, South Patrol and their efforts. We have an enhanced overlay in the Third District, which is part of a pilot program, which I've talked about, which is driving a significant portion of that decrease. In the Central Corridor, Districts 4, 5, and 9, again, some very significant reductions, again, in the person crime category especially. We look at all the crime categories and downs. So, the Central Patrol down, total crime 15 and 1/2 percent. And North, again, kind of a mixed bag right now. We see person crime on a significant downward trend, 29 percent. Property crime is up, and property crime is represented primarily around larcenies and vehicle theft, and a slight tick in burglaries. I'll talk about those in the next slide in a little more detail. As we look across the entire city, homicides are down 9 percent, and as we've moved into May now, and we're always a couple of weeks behind at the board meeting, we continue to see that downward decrease. I talked about rape all the way back to January. Because of the change in the UCR reporting, it's not an accurate comparison of this year to last year. We had, I asked planning and technology to look at the category and compare the same coding rules to last year. If that were the case, we would see a decrease as well. So, although it's a 52 percent increase, 35 incidents, it's mostly because, it is all because of the change in the coding regulations that UCR and the FBI has applied to us and other agencies around the country. Robberies, aggravated assaults, and burglaries, as we move across all the categories, are down. Our challenges remain in larcenies and vehicle thefts. Vehicle thefts are starting to reemerge a little bit, and I've asked Colonel O'Toole and Major Spease to focus the anti-crime unit and the special operations teams on vehicle theft. As you know, several years ago, vehicle theft were one of the driving factors of crime in the city. They've done, the department has done an excellent job of driving those numbers down, and I want to make sure that we keep them at the lowest levels possible. And again, arson is a small category. We look at homicides across the city. Again, the distribution of homicides throughout the city remains the same. Essentially, we focus on hotspots. We've put resources into the neighborhoods where we see hotspots, and although they're difficult crimes to prevent, I believe we are having some success in the aggravated assault category, which are certainly precursors to homicides, and we'll continue to focus through hotspots. Homicide, the trend this year compared to the five-year trend. As we talked about, we saw a spike in January, an increase, and that's when we focused in on the College Hill neighborhood, and rolled out our enhanced overlays to try and combat the nexus between drugs, guns, violence, aggravated assaults, and homicides. Compared to the five-year trend, we continue to be below them since January, and again, it's a tough category, but we continue to focus on it to make sure that we keep that number as low as possible, like all of the numbers. Citywide robberies, again, looking at, the blue line is the five-year comparison compared to the 2012, 2013. We remain below the five-year average, and our trend line tends to match what we've seen historically. Colder months, they tend to decrease; warmer months, we've seen an increase. And robberies are always one of the categories that we respond to most quickly when we see upticks. Aggravated assaults, I talked about for a minute, are precursors to more violence and homicides specifically. We, again, are staying below the five-year trend, and our pattern seems to match what we see as the weather gets warmer. But this is really where we are putting a focus with our special operations and our enhanced overlays to identify individuals with guns, to identify individuals with propensity for violence. The intelligence unit has done an excellent job of working out profiles on some of those individuals and targeting individuals specifically. They've had some very significant arrests and taken some very, quite a few guns off the street. Burglaries, again, following the five-year trend, we are a little below, seem to not be increasing with the five-year trend right now, although I've seen a slight uptick most recently. That's an area we continue to focus on. If you'll notice, through our self-initiated activity, which we talk about every Thursday at ComStat, our building checks are up substantially. Our self-initiated activity, one of the categories that we monitor is building checks. Building checks are up significantly throughout the city, and that could be one reason that we seem to be able to keep our burglaries well below the five-year average right now, and we're going to continue to focus that and push our self-initiated activity. One example is that we talked about, and I'm excited that we may have some positive press about it, is, as you know, we had an academy class, as Colonel Gray mentioned, that graduated last week, 26 young individuals. Colonel O'Toole and community policing came up with a strategy, a plan, to put those younger officers out on footbeats for the beginning portion of their FTO training, doing the self-initiated activity, indoctrinating them into the community policing philosophy, getting familiar with their neighborhoods, doing building checks. So hopefully, those 26 officers that spend eight hours a day out on foot patrol will also have an impact on a lot of crime categories, and specifically burglary. So, thank you very much. Next slide is larcenies. Larcenies are a challenge for us, especially as the weather gets warmer. Larcenies, the primary category, the primary crime that's driving that category, larcenies from vehicles. We continue to focus and look for strategies. Although we do see some isolated pockets of multiple break-ins at a time, what we're seeing now are ones and twos, which are very hard to combat and very hard to predict. So, we're working with our crime analysis unit, we're working with overtime money, we're working to focus on those areas where we do see the ones and twos, and try and catch the individuals that are responsible for that. Again, we will see some small pockets of multiple break-ins, but they tend to be clustered in ones and twos right now. And then, vehicle theft is an area that I, as I mentioned, that we're seeing an uptick on, and I've asked Colonel O'Toole and Major Speese to focus on vehicle theft to make sure that we keep those crimes in check. We've done, the department's done an outstanding job over the last six or seven years to drive down that category, and we're going to keep that category as low as possible. But again, we're trending well below the five-year, but I am seeing a slight uptick as the weather gets warmer right now. So that's the crime report that we have for the first four months of 2013. Yes, sir?
Colonel, if you go back to the slide, we have the trend, the trends of since 2006.
The second slide, second slide.
If you could do that, please. It's pretty close to here. That one, is that the one?
Yes.
Okay. Explain with that, I see all those.
Okay. We'll start with the.
I'll take my time, I can figure it out. We want to do that pretty quickly, but if you go ahead and explain.
We'll start with the red graph. The red bar represents total crime, the total number of incidents, crimes that have been reported for the first four months of this year compared to the first four months of the previous years going back to 2006. So as you can see, if we start at 2006, there were 14,289 crimes reported in the first four months of that year, compared to the first four months of this year, 7,597. So we've.
Percentage-wise, I guess my point was, that's what I thought, it's approaching a 50 percent drop.
It is, yes, sir. And again, that's total crime, and total crime is driven primarily by the property crime category, which includes the stolen vehicles, the larcenies, the burglaries. And so, as you can see, if we go back with the gold bar to 2006, 11,658 property crimes reported that year compared to 6,140 property crimes this year. So, not quite half, but well under the 40 percent reduction. And then, again, the one that is most, we spend a majority of our time focused on are the violence and the person crime, the blue category. Going back to 2006, 2,631 crimes compared to 1,457 this year, so almost a 1,200 crime reduction for the first four months of this year compared to 2006.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chief.
So now, we'll move into, under the report of the chief, B., a building update. 1915 Olive, the good news, good news, everybody, the good news is yesterday, the Board of Public Service met and approved the contractor, the low bid contract for the building of TriCo Construction at $6.3 million, which was what the bid came in at, with no changes, no cost increases to the department. That means now that the city is in a position to sign the contract and start the work, and I would imagine that that happens. The contracts should be signed by the end of May, which would give the contractor the go-ahead to start construction on that building. And again, we're 270 days out from, that's the target completion date, so we're looking at a completion at the end of January, beginning of February of next year. So, the contract, it was approved by BPS. Through the normal contract negotiations and processes, it'll be signed, and then construction will be able to start on the building. Any questions about 1915 Olive? That's good news. That's a good sign. Moving right along to the next item, private security matters. There's a request from Barnes Jewish Hospital for an armed, uniform-exempt private security officer license for three individuals, Tyrone Simkins, Jason Potter, and Jermaine Bishop. And the recommendation is that those three private security officers be approved for an armed, uniform-exempt license.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next item is police officer to sergeant promotional process update. As you were aware, earlier this year, the Board disqualified the low bidder of the PO to sergeant promotional process for performance issues in previous testing processes. A new company, EB Jacobs, has been engaged, and we are currently in conversations with them about constructing a test that will be administered. That test will not be administered and the results in place by what has typically been our deadline, July 1st. So, this is requesting that the Board allow the current list to expire on June 30th of this year, as it would normally. And then, at the June meeting, I will bring back a process for the promotion process for PO to sergeant that will be administered sometime later this year. Then a list will be provided to the Board, as it has been in the past, and promotions can be made. I believe this is the, a way to equitably represent what we're trying to do. To extend this list and allow the candidates on this list that were normally a two-year process, to extend them beyond that would not, in my opinion, be fair to the individuals who are now in the testing process, because more vacancies, more opportunity would have been developed. We will fill all of the existing vacancies as of the June board meeting with people from this list, which is the way it should be and the way it has been in the past, and then any future vacancies will be filled from the list that will be assembled and prepared and presented to the Board at a later date.
Discussions? No discussions? Motion? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The next item is a request to accept grant funds from the Missouri Department of Transportation for a clicket, our ticket overtime enforcement program. The grant funding is in the amount of $10,000 and will be administered by our traffic safety division. So the request is to accept a grant, which will be used between May 20th and June 2nd of this year in the amount of $10,000.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The next item is the Narcotics Control Assistance Program, and in agreement with the city of Maryland Heights. We've had a long-term relationship with the, under the NCAP grant, the Narcotics Control Assistance Program, and Maryland Heights, and this is just to request to re-enter or extend that agreement. There are no funds required from the Metropolitan Police Department, it's about an equitable sharing program.
Did you mean Maryland Heights or the Midwest HID?
Oh, I'm sorry, did I skip? I skipped the HEIDA grant. I'm sorry, I skipped the HEIDA grant. The HEIDA grant, if you want to go back, you'll do the HEIDA grant. This is a request from Vonda Rushing, who is Lieutenant of Special Ops, to enter into an agreement with the Midwest HEIDA, which is the high-intensity, actually, Midwest High-Intensity Drug Trafficking Area for the Most Violent Traffickers Task Force. It's to accept $15,000 to lease two vehicles, and again, we have a long-term relationship with HEIDA for these types of programs.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Then the next item is to enter into a contract and agreement with the city of Maryland Heights regarding the Narcotics Control Assistance Program.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item H, asset forfeiture request for metro air support. We have a long-term commitment and relationship with St. Louis County and St. Charles County to support an aviation unit through a not-for-profit, the 501(c)(3). The Metropolitan Police Department contributes $150,000 of asset forfeiture funds to assist with the daily operations of the program. Again, this program has been in existence for several years, and this is to extend our cooperation and our participation in that program. I will tell you, from an operational standpoint and an enforcement standpoint, aviation support, air support is critical to our mission.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item I, laboratory clerk modified job descriptions and pay increases. This is a request to upgrade five positions in the laboratory to reflect their current work and their current jobs. The net impact is $6,575 for those five employees.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item, internship with university learning partners. The police department, over time, gets many, many requests for internships. We are a great incubator for ideas in the academic community. We're a great learning field for individuals. This is a request to create nine internship programs, recurring internships, filled by qualified candidates from Harris-Stowe, University of Missouri, St. Louis, and St. Louis University. We anticipate a small cost of about $4,500 a year to offset incidental expenses. We will ask the Police Foundation to fund that.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Question, if $4,500 is for all nine?
That's correct. That is handles, not 45 times nine, but 45 on total.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
The next two will be a request to accept donations from the Police Foundation. There are four items on the first memo. The first is to accept $5,400 to send members of the department to FBI G-Leads training that will cover 12 officers at the end of this month. The second item is an X-ray system laptop computer for our bombing and arson unit, handheld radar gun, and a cellular phone download to allow officers to retrieve data from suspect cell phones. Along with that are the split costs for communications, I'm sorry, split cost for winter jackets, the Polus Ranger Crew 800 ATV, and to accept a 32-inch HDTV for the homicide unit.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next item is, again, a donation from the Police Foundation for our SWAT unit to accept $6,399.80 for green gas blowback LMC-4C professional training weapons, $2,799.80 for pistols, and $959.76 for Spectro Pro Shield full head shield goggles.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Item A1 is a proposed revision to Rule 7 of the police manual, specifically Rule
7.004(c)(23), which provides penalties for failure to attend court or court proceedings. As you can see, the proposed revision would change the punishment to, for a first offense, one-day suspension for a second offense, two-day suspension, I'm sorry, written reprimand for the first offense, one day for the second offense, and a three-day suspension for the third offense, and it would also only consider the most recent three-year period. So, we would ask that that proposed revision be approved.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item A2 is being tabled.
Item A3 concerns proposed modifications to Rules 1 and 2 of the manual. There are specifically three manual provisions which are proposed to be revised. One would be Section 1.002, 1.201, and the addition of a new Section 2.003. These are all focused on the eventual possibility, contingency, that there will be no Board of Police Commissioners continuing. So, Section 1.002 would devolve the authority from the Board to the chief, and I believe Colonel Switzer has a proposed alternative version of that, that I'll let him talk about in a second. Section 1.201 just eliminates the reference to the Board as the adopter of the manual. And Section 2.003 would provide that if the Board ceases to exist, then the chief of police, or whatever title he's going to carry in the future, would be considered the appointing authority at the police department. And if Colonel Switzer would like to talk about his alternative version of Section 1.002.
Thank you, Mark, and to some extent, this might also apply to 2.003. My suggestion is stylistic and not substantive, but it's, the way the draft is originally circulated, it refers to the terms of office of the board members expiring pursuant to the local initiative, the local control initiative, which is a phrase that's used in the new statute, but in some ways, our terms do not expire because the Board continues to exist for the purpose of handling lawsuits that are pending or that arise out of incidents that occur prior to local control taking effect. And so, I've suggested some language that is a little bit more expansive than the terms expiring, and this is the language that I proposed. In the event that, A, the responsibilities of the Board set out in this manual are terminated, or the terms of the board members expire for purposes other than litigation as set out in and pursuant to Section 84.345.1, RSMO, and any implementing St. Louis City ordinances, and B, the person or entity who is to assume those responsibilities that had been the responsibility of the Board is not set out in Section 84.345.1 or related Missouri statutes or implementing ordinance consistent with Missouri statutes, then all powers, rights, duties, authorities, and responsibilities referenced in this manual shall reside in the chief of police or such other title indicative of the highest-ranking commissioned officer in the police department. And the reference to the title comes from the fact that the city charter currently would provide that the title of the chief would become commissioner. So, I move the adoption of section, of a modification to Section 1.002, as I described.
May I ask a question? So basically, only thing that you're preserving for the Board is for the purpose of litigation? Is that what I'm getting from what you're reading?
Yes, although it's not that I'm preserving it, that's all, that the local control statute leaves with the Board after local control takes effect.
So your only thing is to be sure that that is spelled out, that as far as litigation is concerned, board members are still considered having some sense of responsibility?
That's correct. As the original draft circulated.
Sometimes I can understand better when I read it myself.
As originally circulated, it refers to the terms of the board members expiring, and that is actually the language that's in the local control initiative, but it says expire except for certain things, which is, in a way, not expire. expire except for certain things, which is, in a way, not expiring. So I added some language to refer to the responsibilities terminating or expiring rather than the Board members' terms expiring.
Can you move this one through? Okay. I think that's, I'll just have to read.
Motion to accept?
I make the motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Was that, was that for all three?
Yes.
Okay.
And, well, my motion as stated was 1.002.
Okay, so we need to take up the other two sections.
On 2.003, I would have the same, actually, make the same modification regarding the responsibilities terminating in addition to terms expiring. And with that modification as circulated, I would move approval of 2.003.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That would leave Section 1.201.
Aye.
Motion to accept the changes to 1.201?
I don't think there was any need for any changes in 1.201. So I move approval of 1.201 as circulated with the Board packet.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item A4 concerns proposed modification to Rule 11 of the Police Manual, specifically Section 11.002. There are rare occasions where the chief, in his capacity as chief, needs to be able to retain the services of third-party vendors in connection with ongoing internal investigations. This proposed revision would authorize the chief to be able to make those expenditures on an expedited basis. We would ask that be approved.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
The next regularly scheduled open board meeting shall be held on Wednesday, June 19th, 2013, at Police Headquarters, 1200 Clark Avenue, St. Louis, Missouri. And the Board intends to go into a closed session at eight o'clock AM on Wednesday, June 19th, 2013, at Police Headquarters, 1200 Clark, to discuss matters of discipline, hiring, firing, promotion, litigation, causes for legal action, and confidential and privileged communications with legal counsel, with a closed record and a closed vote pursuant to Section 610.021 of the Missouri revised statutes.
Question, those transfers?
Yes. So. Okay, I presume this is, this will be item B then. These are proposed budget transfers, these budget transfers have already been approved by the Chief of Police, and as you can see, they are for, mainly for software and office and computer equipment, and we do ask that they be approved.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, Mark, was there an early approval item that needed ratification?
I believe Colonel Gray referenced that already, didn't he?
Good. All in favor?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you, everyone.
Motion to adjourn?